The streets dealing these deadly substances and people that are addicted are missing out on opportunities to get the crucial health that they need by beginning recovery court or being able to get placement facilities and things like that. The great thing with the 1064 defender is LaFritia will show up, be able to talk to you all about it. When it comes to the courts, they are saying that this machine identifying is enough to get the process started immediately and not happen to wait for these lab results to come back. And then that helps with the bottleneck of waiting for things and things getting moving forward. And also is officer safety. You know, we can, with this machine, we can test names right in the package. We don't have to take it out. We don't have to be exposed to the substance that's inside the packaging. So that's, that's huge for the officers when you have these like fentanyl and stuff like that, because just a minimal amount of fentanyl, I mean, that, that can kill a person. So it takes away exposure from our officers and it's, it's a lot more safe for them. And as we all know, the sheriff and I are both big when it comes narcotics. We were both supervisors of narcotics units. We've been on the front line when it comes to fentanyl crisis and narcotics for most of our career. It's, it's big for us. It's not about just putting people in prison or anything. For us, we're also big when it comes to drug court and, and those type of things to help the recovery and get people into those recovery. And it's not unknown, you know, that there's been members and friends of my family that struggle with this. So I have firsthand knowledge of what it's like having to go through those type of things. So with the sheriff and I, it's a big deal for us. And now that we're kind of getting leveled out, it's going to be something that we're going to be focusing on a lot more combating narcotics, being out there doing saturations, getting into the streets, trying to work, work with the public. That's why we're so big on transparency and being a big part of the public with all of our functions and everything. Public's got to trust us in order to come talk to us. That's why you don't, you don't see that, that's why we do all of these things, that way we are part of the community, that people feel safe coming to us and talking with us because that's how you become successful in combating these type of things. We're also talking with several surrounding counties here and everything about cooperation, being able to get together and then help fight the epidemic here with resources and manpower. So we're, we're all trying to have a meeting, get together and work together so that we can help each other out in this fighting against the epidemic. So the way that the 1064, like I said, it helps out a lot because of the exposure. We don't get exposed to it. We can test it right through the package. And then as LaFritia will tell you, when it comes to the court system, how it helps speed things out and get people into recovery and those type of things. It's kind of where I'm at with that. If LaFritia would like to talk a little bit.
Yeah, so the Clinton Police Department has one of these. Jim, you probably recall, there was some discussion about this.
Yep.
A couple, maybe a couple of years ago, maybe a year ago. I actually went to the training with the law enforcement officers with Clinton Police Department to learn how this thing works, this instrument. It's used by the federal government particularly when doing border control and things of that nature to test things as they're coming over the border. This is, historically, we've had like essentially little blue packets that either turn a certain color or whatever to test a substance. They have historically not been that accurate, so they have not been accepted by the court system. This, this device uses a laser essentially. It's a particular type of science. It's not much different than what the lab does really. The lab just has other additional and things that they do to ensure the, ensure the instrument that they're using and things that they can do that's separate from that, but it's really not all that different. And so this is, not everything can be tested. It depends on what kind of packaging it's in and things like that because it is a laser, so it can set things on fire. But it can test liquids, it can test powder, it can test through a package most of the time. I know the Clinton Police Department has, has used it in, to help the, the fire department in investigating certain substances that are found on scene because it can test those to tell you, because there are thousands of things that it can test for. And then even if it has multiple substances, you can look at the different results and line it up to see if it's a mixture of methamphetamine and fentanyl or what have you. So when the Clinton Police Department got theirs, I did, and I did work on investigating the legitimacy of it and also spoke with the court. With regard to cases, typically, historically, we have not been able to file anything without a certified lab report from the highway patrol. That takes months, sometimes a year to get back. I'm sure it doesn't take too much thought process to put together that a lot of drugs can be done and a lot of drugs can be sold in that amount of time. And typically, historically, if say a department busts, especially a dealer and that, and they, they take all their cash, they take all their drugs, they deplete all their resources in that bust, but they're not taken into custody, they're not taken off the street. Historically, they will get even more drugs than they had when they were busted to make up for what was taken. And so it actually becomes an even more dangerous situation. And so we have with the Clinton Police Department had very successful results with regard to particularly dealers. There's been a couple, one across the street from elementary school. There's been several and they were immediately put on a 24. They did not leave custody and now they're in the Department of Corrections. And so they weren't able to go back to wherever they went and got refilled and, you know, all those things that made it even more dangerous situation for our community. Also, I've been part of treatment court, part of going to their trainings and everything. They highly suggest that like if a person is arrested for drugs, they should be, if you're going to put them in treatment court, you should do it as soon as possible within weeks. There's a lot of times if we're waiting on a lab, I don't even know about it for a year. Addressing their, their issue and their addiction, a year after they've been busted is, is comical almost because, you know, they've either tried themselves or, you know, they've continued to use, probably picked up other charges in the in-between and that didn't help them any. So using this device to get into the justice system quicker helps our community. It helps the cases move along a lot faster because like I said, the courts have accepted these with regard to getting things going. We, we do still send it to the lab for trial purposes, but, you know, nobody's getting a trial before the end of 2025 right now anyway, end of 2026. So by that point, we would have a lab. And I have yet to see the 1064 be inaccurate. There is self-test that it does, so if there's some kind of issue, you can't even test the substance that you're wanting to test. It won't, it won't do it. It does, it does a self-check and then it does a self-check after you test whatever you're testing. And, I mean, there's been times that it's helped individuals not be charged. You know, you think you have some kind of substance, it ends up being acetaminophen and they've just ground it up. You know, things like that. So it, it helps our community in a number of different ways. It helps defendants get, you know, into things like treatment court. And sometimes it's not even treatment court, just getting them into some kind of outpatient services as a condition of bond can make all the difference. So, and yes, we've had a number of overdoses in the last, I mean, I, I haven't seen those numbers go down since I've been here. You know, we've had individuals that were in custody or have charges pending that ended up dead in the process because of an OD. So, you know, after being released from custody or what have you. So it's, it's a real problem. I understand the Clinton Police Department a lot of times will be cooperative and assist and be willing to test something, but that doesn't help, you know, the deputy that's sitting in Urick or Windsor or what have you with this substance, it doesn't help that person stay safe. And quite frankly, if the sheriff's office is wanting to do some of the things they're wanting to do, that's going to be a huge burden for the Clinton Police Department to, to, to expect them to just drop what they're doing and come and, and do what the sheriff's office needs.
Is this the same thing as what we looked at?
Yes.
I guess, I guess when I talked to you, it's been, I think maybe a little over a year or whatever, because I know I talked to you or Kent too. Kent wasn't much on time.
I was, yes.
And.
I went and spoke to the Clinton.
That's the reason. And part of it back then, the judge, it didn't, didn't sway in any way. I understood that.
Oh, no, judge was definitely on board. That's why I went to.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I guess that was back then and I'm not saying.
Is this the same one Johnson County?
Yes.
Because this is the one, this is the one we talked about in fact's case. Because Johnson.
When we were up there on the narcotics unit, we all know that we came from Johnson. All the things that they're saying, before the 1064 came up there, we were waiting on labs, we were dealing with the same dealers. They were, like she said, re-upping for more and more, there was more search warrants, we're putting our guys in more and more danger, happened to hit the same houses chasing the same guys and these guys are getting more and more entitled with what's going on with them because they're, they're feeling like they're getting away with it because we're sitting there waiting on labs, waiting on labs. And then also the ones that are addicts, you know, some of them, you know, it's, it's a rare occasion, some of them do, they get back on, on track on their own. And then what happens is a year later, here comes their charges and then you're taking them right back to their recovery and putting them right back in the system. And I could tell you when it comes to the, the 1064, that I know the Clinton, the detective foreman, he worked with me up there in Johnson County on one of my units. That's why when he got down here, he knew how valuable of an asset it was to have and that's why he started pushing for it. And, and like she said, it's, it's a, it's basically a fingerprint. This laser will shoot in there, it makes a light inside that light, there is basically a fingerprint of that substance that right, light reflects back into the machine and this machine has a library of thousands of different substances. And once that hits, because it's a thumbprint, basically like hitting a thumbprint on a bad guy, they're like, that's it, that's the substance. It will alert if it's a, like a scheduled narcotics like meth. It will alert red saying, hey, you have a scheduled narcotics. And the way that helps with the, the courts also is that we can take a photograph of it right there with the machine. The machine shows how the test is, you print that out, you also print out the pre-test of the known substance that you tested showing that the machine worked correctly. And then you peg all that together in the package to send to LaFritia and then she was able to show this, what this meth, and I can tell you that when I was up there, I had to testify in court to this machine. The judge took it, accepted it up there, just like she's having success down here. But I can tell you that when we got this machine up there and was able to fast-track things, get people in the recovery, put dealers away and not have to chase the same guys around, it, it makes an immediate impact throughout your community because they see the dealer go to jail and get right back out because we're waiting on lab results and they see them running out there. So the dealer's entitled, the citizens and everybody else are still worried, but when you start putting people in jail immediately and leaving them there, people see that.
Is this a thing you gotta like renew every year for the?
This is, this is, the machine is, it's a one-time cost. They will, with maintenance and everything, they will help out with that, they'll bring down for training. I mean, it's, it's a wonderful machine. They was always good to work with in Johnson when I was working up there with them. There's a quote on how much it costs there. That's a little bit about the machine there. What we're asking for is the fact that there, we do know that there is an opioid, there is an opioid fund that is, I believe, available through money here. We're asking for that to be looked into and that's, like I said, where we're trying to stress and the fact is, is it's an immediate thing, but it's also a long-lasting thing that's going to help the community by putting dealers away and getting people that are in addiction to a chance to get to recovery in a quicker manner.
Oh, good deal. I thought it was, I was, but it seems like it's gone. I can't remember what it cost. I hope.
There's a quote right here.
Yeah, I know, but I was just curious. I know when we talked about it, I had, because the city was wanting to do one.
So the thing with city, what we're trying to say is that.
Yeah, you need to.
Well, the sheriff and I are, we're, this is big for us and our caseload is going to rise a lot and we can't be going over to Clinton all the time when we're trying to run search warrants, when we're trying to, you know, we're making stops. I mean, they're, they're great to work with, but I mean, you're going to start overloading their system. They need to use it and if we're going to up what we're going to do, like we are, because we're going to.
We need to have our own.
That we're going to need to have our own so that we can keep on top of things.
I just want, I mean, the Clinton Police Department has been helpful and, and the sheriff's office has had to kind of pick and choose, like this is a series and I'm going to call P D, have them assist with this. For instance, I, we had a prelim a few weeks ago on an individual who was found with a significant amount of methamphetamine, twin little babies in the house, running around with the methamphetamine. And so those, like that case and the Clinton Police Department officer had to testify at that prelim testified about using this device and the judge found it over. So this, I think that it would be helpful for the sheriff's office not to have to pick and choose.
And I can tell you that here just recent, just recently, we had a drug overdose death in Windsor. We just had here a couple of days ago, two overdoses on fentanyl. Thankfully, they've survived, but this is something that's coming. When we were in Johnson County, I can tell you, it started to hit harder. We started having a lot of deaths up there. I worked some of those deaths. And when I say their deaths, it's not just addicts. I worked a two-year-old's death because the, the family was not.
Anything out of there right now.
Doing well in a two-year-old, they didn't get over that and died. So it's not just addicts and dealers. You're, you're dealing with the kids in the house. That was probably one of the hardest cases I've ever had to work. So it's very important and passionate for us to be able to combat narcotics in our community.
It's smaller than what I thought it'd be.
It's, yeah, it's really.
I just need to look and see.
Or a box you got to put it in.
I'm going to give the heavy duty box.
Because I don't know off the top of my head what the budget is.
Not just carry around in your pocket.
I've used it numerous times and had lots of success with it.
We visited about this. Did you guys find out anything? Are we able to use the opioid money on it?
That was what we're looking at. When it comes to the opioid money, I believe it's about recovery and like getting people in the facilities. And that's why one of our big things is, is this will help get people in the facilities. This will be something that for long-term can push those things, get people through the court system faster, in the recovery court.
Kelly's going to check.
I think we can definitely look into it.
I think if we can get it, I mean.
I know that opioid, every county's different and I've talked to many counties and obviously in Johnson, wherever the commissioners deem that the opioid fund goes towards. The most common theme that I've heard, as long as it's an overreaching and overlasting effect in opioid epidemic, obviously this is, there's counties that buy cars, there's counties that have made jelly movements. It, it depends on what you want to use it for. Our, our thought on that, and I wholeheartedly agree, as long as it's something that is impacting our county long-term. A, a vehicle is a short-term fix. There's nothing long-term about a vehicle.
Because when you did all the drugs.
Is that the opioid settlement fund? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's what it was.
We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for that, right?
Right, but I don't know what was, was the thought process behind that. Who was getting that money? I just need to make sure it's not earmarked for something else before I can agree.
We're, we're okay to do it.
Yeah, I mean, there's money in there. I just need to make sure that it's not earmarked for something else.
I don't think it is.
It's not, yeah. I've asked since I've been here about the money and nobody has any idea where this money at or how to use it or how to spend it or who's getting it. We've tried to have this discussion.
Can you transfer it to Bridge? We can.
Well, I know at one point the treatment court was trying to do something to get some of it too. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
You get to have this and then.
I think the treatment court, I think we talked about it, but I, we need to find out, but I don't think it's a problem because I, that's about all I know of coming out of it because that's only place it has to be. It's supposed to be on, just like.
How many seven?
The quote in there is.
About forty.
About forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
How much does that sound like forty thousand? Oh, I'd buy two, Joe. That way you can have one.
This is on road three now. That's a problem.
We got first.
You're talking to a deputy.
No, I'm not.
No, I, I think should be.
Do we need to make a?
We'll have to make a motion, yeah. We'll have to make a motion.
Do you want to find out how?
But let's find out.
I'm working on it, just to, I'm, I'm working on it.
Oh, okay.
She's at it right now. So anyway.
Two for two, go for bid.
Because if that's, that'll be one place we really shouldn't spend it in my case. As I'd thought about before, I thought when, but to me, I never could and you need one that cars, you don't need one to chase down a city policeman to do it. If you're going out on a drug test, you won't have.
When you're waiting for labs, it's, those, those guys, they will, they'll run from you. That puts our community in danger every time you go to chase them, you're chasing the same guys. And, and then, and like I said, just the heartbreaking ones, the ones that are finally, you know, doing well and then a, a year later, here comes their charges and now you're putting them right back in the system and that's, that's just as bad as the other ways.
You guys have any questions on it in general?
I'd seen it. If it's the same machine, I think it is. I was just looking at it, I thought, I'd seen that before, I knew what we was talking about. I think it's a good deal. Okay.
We're good.
We're good.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Most remain second to let the sheriff's department buy a, a ten.
1064.
1064. Drug tester. Any other discussion on it? If not, we're going to continue vote.
I don't know, I'll just make it, but we'll get you a paper.
Okay.
Nope, I don't got nothing.
Is that a no?
Wait, what? Yes, yes.
No, virtually yes. Sorry, I was listening to Aaron just in case I needed to catch up on something.
Aaron's in.
Yeah, that's a yes.
Definitely.
Boy, you make me nervous.
Motion carried. Be careful with this no business.
No more talking in the room during voting.
Yeah, no, no, too many conversations going on.
You gotta get his attention first.
About the bottom mind is coming out.
I'm pretty sure this is a sole source, but we'll pull that.
I think.
We'll attach it to it.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you all for spending your time and thank you all. We're good.
You might want to get Jen out of the hall.
Awesome. We'll see you soon. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Good job.
Thanks, sir, appreciation. Thanks, sir, appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't light me up, I ain't trouble. If you do light me up, you can speed up.
I just knew there was conversation before of using it for something else. I wanted to make sure.
Go court too a little bit.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I didn't say, yeah, you can have it. Well, Rick already promised it to me.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't check on the financials. You guys asked me to come about storage.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I'm hoping there was some kind of update on.
Well, we haven't got any.
You said you had some ideas.
Yeah, it's my idea.
But you didn't say about loud at the meetings.
Well, I just wanted to kind of have an idea of how quickly, because that may change my ideas. You know, I've thought about, because we're busting at the seams here at the courthouse and my long-term goal would be to scan those things into my system.
Oh, that'd be great.
And, and not have the paper files other than the paper that we absolutely need that might be certified documents or things like that, that from a, from a legal standpoint, evidentiary standpoint, I might need to keep. But that requires somebody doing that and my staff is pretty busy already, so, and we have rooms like full cells, full of boxes of files, so that's not just like a few boxes. So it's a big undertaking to do. So I don't know timeline wise, how quickly I need to get stuff out and depending on when that is, will depend on kind of what type of solution I might come up with.
What we got right now, don't know, I think it's probably the, the container we have over there. Is it full or got quite a bit of stuff in it?
All we got was three shelves that we built and it's got Ann Julie and stuff on it. The rest of it is wide open because nobody else has brought.
Well, that's, when it's sealed up, it's sealed and tight, don't leak.
What is?
Not the building, right? You're not talking about the building.
I've only been in the build, the, in the big barn.
Oh, no.
And that's not.
No, 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 I'm not the container that sits over, it's sitting on concrete.
Like an icebox kind of thing?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's, it's got one way in.
Okay.
And.
Where is it?
It's right near the bridge bar in the.
Set behind the.
My big barn.
Long green building.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be good if you'll look at it, that'd be, that's the only thought I'd think of in far as leaking or anything else. It seals up pretty good, doesn't it?
We haven't found no leaks of it.
No, mice not going to get in there. It'd have to be running everywhere you's in there.
Who's going to have access to it?
Well, that, we, we can handle that whatever we want. Right now, no one's got anything in there, his hands, old stuff.
I'm the only one right now that has a key to it.
Yeah.
Well.
Are you storing anything in it?
No, but I'm not just going to hand keys out to different people until I know who, who actually has stuff in there.
We have to ask him, she doesn't.
Y'all know, I caused trouble about that.
I know about that.
I do not.
We've been down that road ever.
Nobody can have access to our files except us.
Yep.
So.
Ann Julie or Rick's should need access to anything in there anymore because it is documents, it's all been scanned into the computer, state computer, but they still got to hang on to the documents.
Right, sure.
So therefore, if you finish filling that up with your stuff, then you would be the only one with the key.
Okay.
Because.
For right now, you'd be the one, for the time being.
And then, I mean, if Rick needs in there, I guess he'd come to you and say.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem.
But, but how soon are you all wanting to vacate the old jail?
We haven't heard anything from Darren, so we don't really know what.
Sure, I don't know. They was going to be, well, big thing is wait until 911, got the computer out there because see, we had to leave everything till they get.
My understanding was they don't even have their 501(c)(3) formed.
That's my understanding as well.
So I don't see it happening.
Not a necessity.
I just don't want it to be like, oh, hey, you need to get it out by next week and I'm in a week long.
Oh, that would be good because that.
That's, that's what I don't want to see happen and then, you know.
If, if that would work for you, that'd work for y'all.
I'll go, I'll check it out.
If you'll look at it, because that's the only thing we can think of, because I said, well, if we had to, if we had a place to set another container, port a pad, set it on there, it really.
Because I, I talked with the sheriff about having a, an, like a extra building or a box of some sort or something behind the sheriff's office because there's obviously surveillance and things of that nature to keep it secure. And, you know, and I could have my own block and whatever that he doesn't necessarily have, although, you know, most of, most of that stuff may be files of his anyway, but, but there will be some that's not. So the biggest thing is just making sure they're.
Well.
Secure and they're not being eaten by mice or.
Right now, that'd be to me the best place if we had to do, because I wouldn't, I for sure wouldn't put it in his evidence room that he's staying in there because you walk in anywhere. But my big thing is if we're going to do that, be better than that be your container. If we do anything, you have to have another container or something. That'd be our own. And once you get all that stuff moved in, I just think it's, me personally.
It'd be like a shipping container.
Oh.
It's a.
It's a box.
And we went in there and built shelves on both sides of it.
Recently.
Yeah, yeah, he had a little.
We had it worked good.
We had it worked good.
Well, that was like, if I only had a shorter period of time to figure it out, that was gonna be my thought of get with sheriff and see, could I park one out back somewhere?
Well, we could, we could surely be, you can be down to the end of the week then, probably.
Um, nah.
No, no, you're busy, I, I happen to know you've probably got a few trials going on, so.
I got one starting this week, yeah.
Y'all need, I hate to bug y'all, but that's, if you're, my big thing is whether you're all okay with it, then we know what we need to be in it.
Okay, I'll go check it out and make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that sounds much better than the barn.
It's your approval on that.
Yeah, so.
Well, I don't think there's a rush.
From what I understand, once the sheriff gets through all the evidence and stuff, they're still gonna utilize that evidence room out there too.
Oh sure, I'm sure there'll be other things they can put in there.
So fishing poles and stuff got like acres in there, probably.
Or I haven't had them come up missing yet.
We always worry about putting fishing poles in there because a lot of them guys out there fish.
My thing is, they're not gonna rush us out of their building, we give them a time of when they can have the building, not reading that building next week.
That's what I was trying to see what your all's.
That's, first off, if you all want it, that's what I want them.
Okay.
If that's, if that's satisfactory, why I was worried about, have four or five locks and.
I'll go out there and check it out.
Yeah, and if it's secure enough and if it's sealed tight enough, now it's better than jail, that old jail, anyway, guarantee you that.
Well.
I can bring, I can bring a key up to you, appreciate that, you guys can go out there and look at it any time.
Appreciate it, yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be alright.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay.
That is?
Sounds great.
Alright, thanks guys.
Alright, y'all have a good day.
You too.
Alright. Oh, LaCrispy, hey.
I guess that wasn't it.
That was.
That old jail, what we was talking about, you was in here when Sebby was talking about.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my thoughts are, what's your opinion about make, we sure don't wanna get into making that a storm shelter and saying, hey, we guarantee it. I mean, that's, because what we're doing when we say that is a certified storm shelter, we're just hanging our neck out.
I will say, I'm not necessarily up to speed on what the codes are and regulations are on declaring something a storm shelter. Um, but I think that that would be a good place to start before.
Before you jump, dump into anything, yes. Now, because I was gonna talk to Mark, but what worried me was the ceiling over there. And, and I don't know, maybe have concrete all around it, rebar and if it's got it to the floor. But it's still, that's, uh, there are just a lot of liability there that goes with it. When you run a bunch of people, especially as many as you can get in there.
I know if there was a tornado coming, I wouldn't be in the new jail, but it's because it's so, the way that it's built. Uh, but I, I would strongly suggest looking at that, I would be hesitant to say yay or nay either way.
Oh, that's, I.
Because I certainly understand wanting to offer a safe place for our citizens, absolutely. Um, but whether that's the safe place, I don't know.
I'd rather be, I'd rather be there than out here on the street, but.
We used to be here, but now that we've gone to security, we can't just let every, especially, you know, when you have a court case going on or something like that and you're bringing people down to get into safety, you don't wanna do it in public, so.
Sure.
Anyway, that's some things, I was just gonna ask you what you thought there.
I.
I know what, I know what causes.
That probably comes with more questions than answers, Jim. Just throwing that at me. I probably have more questions than answers. Um, but I mean, I'd be happy to look at stuff, but just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Oh, I didn't have that, so I just come out here to sit.
Really?
Yeah, open for those.
Um, I don't know if you guys was tagged on the email, but April twenty-second at nine-thirty a.m., uh, Aaron, um, is gonna be here with MODOT to go over the bridge inspections. So, uh.
Who knows that?
April twenty-second at nine-thirty a.m.
It's on our agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Did you just get put there?
No.
Really?
Got put there yesterday.
I was just looking at it, I just noticed it.
Wasn't looking for enough.
Guess I am, that's a good point, gotta read the words, it's on there, huh? Okay.
I guess over the weekend, uh, up northwest had uh, quite a bit of rain, we've had some culverts partially washed out. We've got them barricaded off somewhat. Uh, we've started repairing and replacing today, but have to wait for dig race to come back on some of them. Um, found some log jams underneath bridges, because they got busted loose with the rain and stuff. So, we're gonna be working on that for the next couple of weeks while we're waiting for the Corps of Engineers uh, to give the approval to do the bridge work on West Division. MODOT did approve, um, nine, southeast nine hundred in Leesville, or four fifty, whichever one you wanna call it, uh, for bridge replacement. Uh, that's the one, we're just gonna take the decks and the beams off and bolts and metal down and put new beams on top of it and everything. Uh, all the bridge beams went out, uh, for bid. Uh, the next Tuesday is the day that we open them.
Is it on the year?
Yes, you guys opened them here at ten o'clock that morning. Or Kelly opens them.
Is that on next Tuesday?
I don't know that it's on there yet.
Um, but I was needing some uh, channel for some diaphragms or uh, girders, uh, gussets. So uh, on that bridge beam, I went ahead and threw two hundred feet of uh, six inch channel on it too. So, anyway, um, found one box covert up here in the northeast, northwest, Big Creek Township. I think it's fifteenth Kelly, next Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Fifteenth.
Thank you. No, it'd be the sixteenth, no fifteenth, okay. Thanks. Carry on.
Okay, we got a box of covert up here in the northwest, uh, Big Creek, I believe it is in. Um, the wall has split diagonally, it's caved in. So we're gonna take that box completely out and put a whistle in it. Uh, it's like a three by three box, but since it's a concrete box right now, it's ours to maintain. But when I go back with it, it'll go back with a forty-eight inch uh, pipe. So then it becomes the townships to take care of from this point on. So, um, otherwise.
What room was that?
I ain't sure what, they, they were saying thirteen something or another and I can't find that room yet. So I think they're off on a different room. So, um, otherwise, I think we're pretty well caught up on things. Ted wanted me to let you know, he did get the six oh one bladed.
Oh, I didn't know he did that yesterday.
But he did get a good enough job on it because still, it had like a quarter of a inch of rain down there.
Okay.
And it didn't have the moisture, but he did get, it's a lot better shape than what he said.
Thank you.
Um, your deal up here on five hundred road, I think it is, off that spur there, uh, we're gonna probably start on it next week. I'm gonna call Steven Smith today and have him get with the landowner and get their stuff off right away so we can get in there and work. Uh, otherwise, uh, you guys got anything for me?
I probably do.
Do we get anything on Thursday?
Um, interviews.
Oh, Thursday, we got interviewed at eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock Thursday.
Uh, one of the people that we was gonna interview, uh, cannot make it that day because of his job. Uh, but he would like to reschedule, uh, for Friday or next week.
Yeah, he said Friday anytime, or next week he would be, the next week he would be available, so.
So I didn't know if you guys wanted to make, you know, interview the ones we got Fri- uh, Thursday and do him on Tuesday after the bid opening.
Oh man.
It's the bid opening at ten.
Yes ma'am.
How many, uh, interviews did you decide?
Do it.
How many people did decide on?
Five, next, I submitted to you guys.
Um, we have one, two, three, that will for sure be here Thursday. Um, four, with the man that couldn't make it on Thursday and we need to reschedule for next week. One, um, is moving in July.
Oh yeah.
He called to say, I was really interested in the job, I mean, if you wanna interview me, you can, but I'm moving to.
So he, he is moving over there?
Yeah, he said he was.
He's going to the Philippines.
There you go.
Well, it's gonna be a good old trip every day.
And I don't think, I don't think it's just a travel situation, I think he's going there to live there. So I, I don't know that you should waste your time on that.
Nope.
So we're down to four.
Um, and with that, then interviews don't start until eleven thirty, because the two that were.
On the one day?
This Thursday.
Oh.
We got eleven thirty, eleven forty-five and a twelve o'clock.
Okay.
So I'll be here Thursday, just a little before eleven thirty seven.
Okay.
You got anything for me, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, dude, I got a question for you. Have you heard anything about your private roads down there in Osage special?
They've all been taken care of.
They've been taken care of, okay, they've. They weren't actually private, they were, or they were actually private, they wasn't, okay.
They was actually private roads and they had county green signs on. I looked at the road inventory and everything and I've called Charlene and said, if I'm she, I quit maintaining the roads because you're not getting no money for it. And see, she thought she was gonna be losing roads, which was gonna be. Seeing her for her cart rock money and her rock funds, and she didn't wanna do that.
Did you tell her?
I explained to her, but uh.
I was putting that in.
See, I, I also explained, well, I told her I was pretty certain that's how it was.
But we went down there and ran the whole area and made sure the right signs is up on the right roads.
Okay.
I used my little integrity on the phone, uh, because I ain't got the.
If you want to borrow mine, you can just. Put you on there, so. Do you know how long they've actually been public or private maintained?
I have no idea.
Okay, I didn't know if, if, if you knew that or not.
It would have been, that would be a Scott Lurch in a question.
I'll ask Scott, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Jim, you got anything? Boss, you got anything?
I do have a couple things. Dylan Roder.
Who's got that there, does that?
Um, the Corvus engineers guy that wanted the MOU signed.
Mm-hmm.
He called yesterday and he wanted to let you all know that if you have any questions, this is his phone number about that MOU. Um.
Uh, he called me like seven o'clock, seven thirty, eight o'clock.
Okay.
One night and we talked several times that night. Uh, and I suggested to him, uh, to come to the commission meeting and explain it better. Because there's some of them roads that ain't got no way for a vehicle to turn around, so we can't turn our equipment around there. So them are roads that we wouldn't even be interested in.
Right.
And uh, so, you know, I said, at the time, the commissioners don't think it's a, a good idea. I said, you know, first of all, we gotta ask the townships, are they gonna be willing to take over and light this? Because it's not our property to say, hey guys, we took these over and now it's yours.
Right, yeah.
So I said, we have that meeting on the seventeenth, if you want, we can find out what townships wanna, would be willing to work with you and take them over.
Right.
But uh, far as the county per se, I don't think the commissioners are in favor for it.
The worst thing about it, if they come in and say, you know, I didn't stop them as good as we want, I want you to come back and redo all this. Especially after we done mowed or something like that and go back.
Well, didn't you say it was a working contract too, so they could add one road or two on to you, or is that wrong?
It's a, it's a working contract, he explained that to me too. It's a working contract that it's a mutual agreement to add or take roads off of. It's just something that they're not gonna say, hey, this is yours now. It's something that you guys gotta agree to put on the list.
Gotcha.
Is how he explained it to me on the phone one night.
Okay.
They were gonna provide the gravel?
They provide the materials and, and stuff. We supplied the gas, equipment and the labor.
So, my question would be, since that fall on the township, they don't get more cart money for those, do they? So basically, they're doing it for free.
Mm-hmm.
Oh yeah, then I'd say, no way.
I mean, you just get gravel from, uh, where you stop, down to the edge of the water. And then when the water comes up and it's up for ten days and washes all of our gravel away, then you gotta go back over there and put gravel back down again. But uh.
Let them find a contract.
The townships, I have to supply the labor and the equipment and stuff, um, for the roads, basically. We, we would have to supply the mowing and the covert replacements and stuff like that.
The cores want us to do their work, that's the reason. I know what the whole deal is and that's kinda like that bridge over there. Well, then afterwards, after they done there and stopped it and then it wet the pot, well, I guess you could have fixed it, you know, and done that, so they didn't care about that.
A little higher contract. Man, they got those people driving around, sending all the equipment out.
See, they called, here a couple of years ago.
And I can't find anything anywhere that matches that.
Is this one I brought yesterday?
No.
Damn, the conservation holders, they were supposedly.
So I put the ones that you brought yesterday in the folder, so I was matching them up this morning.
Never been touched.
This came from capital.
You can't talk city limits.
This came from capital, came from Van's Road.
City limits, I was clear.
Because we bought a little cold mix off of them.
And that's.
It's always fun when you mess with the cord.
Huh?
It's always fun when you mess with the cord.
Hey, they can be.
It was just for me hanging out in that.
Or if they go. Seven highway out by Jerry Michael's.
I just wanted to make sure.
They were gonna blow them out.
If you go look in the back.
About thirty of us guys standing in the shop and. Four dudes out there, they built a brand new bridge there, they didn't tear it out, they built a new.
We knew you'd know.
Anything else, you guys, before I leave?
Thank you.
Anything else, boss?
Thank you.
You guys have a good day.
Don't worry about it.
Are we supposed to call him?
I'm playing one.
No, he just wanted to make sure he left his contact information for you.
And he got it.
Oh, I got his.
That's the fellow with the.
You got him handed?
Uh, they got, write it down off, put it on, I'm gonna put it on, I'll make sure I have it.
Okay, next order of business. Teach these fellows how to do a cart rock reimbursement.
Oh, thank you.
So we have these little doofalches right here that we call warrants. And I'm just gonna, I brought this, you guys a stack of these so that you can have them in your drawer readily available. And so.
Going to school again. So I think I'll just.
They're going to class.
Yeah, they're going, you gotta go to class, so I think I'll just go home.
Can I move, I don't wanna knock this off here, can I move this for just a second? So you'll look at your cart contract, once they've completed, once they've called you, once you've checked everything out and you're cool with taking them the money. So this is, this is Mark's, nope, you're good.
Okay.
So at the top part, you can see where it says, office of. So this is going to be, um, road and bridge, because that's where we pay our cart money out of. So you would fill that out as road and bridge.
Okay, is it always road and bridge?
Um, no, it depends if you're requesting a reimbursement from the commissioner line, it would be commissioned. It depends on what part of the budget you're coming out of, right? And then, so you're gonna pay it to, and you're gonna pay it to Honey Creek Township.
But as far as cart rock, it's always road and bridge?
Right, right. And then the amount is up here in the top section, right here on all of your cart contracts. This is, this is the amount. So it's five thousand three seventy-two fifty on this one. You don't have to know the code, um, because we'll put that in, we'll take it out of the cart, but that's like on the budget when we say. Oh, see, I'm terrible with these. Terrible with these microphones. When we say your budget code, that's what these little numbers over here to the side are, that's how we know where to take that money from. And in our road and bridge, which you don't have to notice, because when we send it down, we'll know that it's cart. Um, in our road and bridge, and right here, there's a specific line that is cart. And so that's where all of our cart distribution comes out of. So that would be the line that it would come out of, you guys don't have to know that. But if we were filling something out, that's what it means by expenditure code. Is this code that follows through, um, with the budget.
Okay.
And then four, and you just put cart. And then sign it down at the bottom. And then you'll turn those in to me and then we'll do the process downstairs on our bill day. And then, um, it's, all of them, I believe now, are direct deposit. So you'll get a direct deposit slip like you've seen on the other things that we, the jury paid. So you'll get a direct deposit slip like you've seen on the other things that we, the jury paid. You won't actually get a check. They'll just get that direct deposit slips notifying.
But once we fill this out, hand it to you.
You're done. And I'm gonna date this up here. We missed, we missed the simple, the simple part, the date there. But yeah, you just fill this out for each one. And then what happens is. I will put on here the date that we've paid it. So then we'll know who we've paid, who we, yep. That was easy. And I brought you both a mileage sheet. Like I said, I'm thinking about doing some kind of a. Form fillable something so you guys could just track it, how, unless you just wanna do it on paper.
It's however works best.
It doesn't matter.
For you all.
Does it matter? So. What's easiest for you? We've always just. Put it on a clipboard, throw it in your truck, and when you go somewhere, you just write it down, you know. And then you turn that in basically when you want to. So you turn it in monthly, you can turn it in quarterly, just whatever you guys wanna do. I don't suggest holding it for an entire year. We don't want, no, we just don't want no budget busters in December and go, oh, well, we owe. I mean, it would, it would, you know.
Yeah, I can imagine so.
Monthly would be fine, but I know sometimes you may have ten miles that month, so quarterly kinda makes sense. That's handled, that's handled. I knew there was discussion on what to use that opioid fund for, so I didn't want to say yes.
On the drug court deal. But then nothing stuck that hard.
Well, I had visited with them about it. They brought it up to my, brought it to my attention a while back. But I didn't know the answer to it, so I, I didn't know if they found out the answer.
Well, I knew there was money budgeted, but I wasn't in Rick's head to see what it was budgeted for. If he had already promised somebody else that opioid money, I couldn't very well promise the sheriff's office that opioid.
Well, we just wanna make sure we're covered.
So he came in early, so you don't have. And I gave you more cart contracts. Mark, did you look through those? Do you need some time for that? I just don't wanna get behind of them and say, where's my cart contract? I keep my head above water.
Corps of Engineer. He's now. Is he the uh? Area.
Area engineer.
He's like the field agent.
Field agent?
Yeah, I don't remember if, I don't know if you remember the corps guy sitting there in front of us. He was the one sitting on there. No, he was the one on the end. Wearing a hat.
He's a field agent.
I, I think he's a field agent. This area.
Can I get a copy of these?
Wonder where Mark went today?
I don't know if it's his training or if it's just off work.
He was here this morning.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw him outside earlier.
So a lucrative thing. Would a shipping container, she talked about like a shipping container over there by the sheriff's office, didn't she? Is that something that Aaron could also use? Little extra space to store things?
To me, that'd be the first person that they wanted to. But the big thing is, he don't need to go in there with evidence. Just papers. I would really just, and I don't know how many papers they got. They may fill up a hell of a bunch of it out there. The way it's sound down.
Well, I know what's in that. Jail cells.
And there's more than one jail cell.
Oh, it's, yeah, I mean, the whole top floor. And stacked high.
My big thing is, we need to get in in there and see what we've got. Cause I guess my thoughts are, if, if that works, fine, seal it up if it hurts. I don't care. But if we have to, we need to think about where we can pour another pad. Cause I really think it's a great deal to store stuff in it. Cause it's sealed, it's tight, no lies in it. And I can't help it, temperature wise, it'll be fine.
Well, you also have other county offices who are going to need storage space, so it kinda makes more sense that if she wants her standalone, which I understand why and that. That the other county staff could go out to the Road and Bridge and then maybe she, because the quarters got stuff over there. We've got stuff over there and that's where we was gonna go with our stuff.
Aaron's got stuff over there too, so that's why I didn't know if her and Aaron could share one over there. But she was thinking she needed a.
I don't know how much. She didn't know how many.
It sounded like she was okay with.
I really think she may hopefully uh.
But I mean, she doesn't want anybody having a key to her, which I get. So does it make sense to have a shared space?
How do you pronounce his name?
Which part?
This Y L A N.
No, not Yoder, sorry.
That's what I wanna know.
Dylan, Dylan. She, she scribbled it out, left the D up here. Dylan.
Kelly, you realize I'm.
Threw it for a loop, threw it for a loop.
Well, he spelled it weird. I wrote it down and then he, I said, you spelled your last name and spelled his whole name out like that butchered it all.
Dylan. Now that ain't gonna looks better too.
I can't wait to give Chris, Chris that printer.
Well, Mark here is here somewhere. Both of his vehicles are out there. Well, the emergency management truck and then his other one's sitting right next to him.
He was standing outside when Aaron got here.
I wasn't.
Highlighter and I'll color the road in on this one. Jake's got a whole package of them.
Okay, see if I want that milk back.
Nah, I got his uh. And you said somebody's coming over there to get your license?
Yeah, the guy from the bank. He called break yesterday.
Yeah, I don't care.
It jumbled it up. I can re-print it, but you just want the map anyway.
So does he see mine?
I don't know. He said, basically, he said, Jim and Mark, and I called him yesterday and I'm like, are you?
So. If we, like, my license is up this year, I guess I'll have to ask him. Do I gotta go back in there and give him an up, an updated copy?
I wouldn't think so. I would just think that it needs to be. Legal at the time of signing. You know what I mean?
Cause I really think if he's got some of mine, that could be several years ago. Like Hawthorne now, just like him, I'm trying to have, we used to be a pair. I know we did in things, case in earth, they didn't need it to have mine anyway.
Yeah, no, I don't think that it's a. It's not something that's gonna, you have to keep up with. It's just. I'm not quite sure what's going on, to be honest.
It charged. That's what it looked like when it was new.
Trust me, I found that too. I don't know how it hooks up to this.
It's out of my finger. Was it charged?
When I noticed it was off, I checked and it said, it said seventy-six percent charged.
Mark, I forwarded you an email from Claude Lakes.
Did you come in and talk to us?
If I could.
What's your name?
Jim McHaddie.
Jim McHaddie.
Can you spell your last name for me?
N C H A D D E N.
N C H A D D E N?
Okay, I'm Jim Stone.
I live over on the south end of Booth Road. I live by Barry Ball, the little men's horse farm. I bought my house four years ago when I was getting done traveling for the COVID. Cause Booth Road just seemed like a nice quiet road and everything. That's before they top sealed it, I guess. By the time I moved into my house, they top sealed it. Now people think that road is. The drag strip to get to seven from that one little subdivision off Cart Kid Car. I'm just thinking, that's where everybody's coming, cause they. Don't work here in town, they work in the city, so they fly up my road, get to seven to take off. That was a big deal and it's always been a big deal for me. But now what bothers me the most is the semi trucks. I counted seven semi trucks coming down Booth Road last Tuesday. I'm not sure if you've been down Booth Road, but people do walk up there when the weather's nice, there's no sidewalks. I don't want sidewalks, cause property, you know, that and stuff. But there's certain se- sections of that road where two cars actually have to slow down to get through. There's one little. What do you call this thing? But now you get a semi coming down that road at the same time, and it's usually going south. They're cutting over from seven to get to eighteen. But now I've noticed that they're starting to go north also. I don't think that road's set up for that. I mean, I just talked to Ronan Bridge and he said, yes, there is no. Limits that, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, I've never seen how many semis coming down the road since I've been here until recently. I talked to the sheriff's department, I talked to the police department, I talked to Don, which is one of the, yeah. And he even actually came out to the house one day uh and said, he agrees that, yes, they need to do something. So I'm just presenting it to you guys, maybe, I mean, I'm not sure what to do. I mean, the speed limit's thirty-five miles an hour. But that doesn't seem to matter there. People, I mean, I had a guy roll coal past my house yesterday, matter of fact.
Well, I believe it.
Pardon me?
I said, I believe.
There's, there's a couple cars, I know they're kids. From that, that one neighborhood, they come up there and they like to just fly. And I'm afraid that, cause there's an old couple that walks up and down that road, there's a gentleman that walks his dog. I walk my dog. There's a couple families that walk their kids. I'm afraid one of these idiots are gonna come up the road on their phone, text them. Next thing you know, they're gonna hit, they hit a speed bump and it's actually a kid or something. I have no problem with y'all. If y'all want to put speed bumps in front of my house, I'd be happy. I easily drive twenty-five to thirty, just out of respect for my neighbors.
You said that's Booth Road and.
Yeah, right out here.
Booth Road runs.
North and south.
All the way to Eighteen Highway, right?
And no, no, no. Kid car, and it turns into forty going south, I mean, west from there. Booth goes all the way to seven. I mean, it's a nice neighborhood and like I said, I hate to see something happen. Out of respect for my neighbors, I thought I'd very community spot.
What kind of semis are they?
Oh, they're trailers, full trailers and everything.
They're, excuse me?
They got trailers, I mean, they're.
Grain haulers right now.
Every now and then you see a grain hauler come down there. But a lot of them are, was that A B?
A V P?
I can't think of it. I, I was gonna sit out the. I can't think of any. I was gonna say, I don't know. Take pictures, just to let them know that someone's watching.
They're on Harris. They're coming from, yeah, they're coming from Harris.
But I mean, that's even people that I've talked to, you said, yeah, that's what they're doing, cause they're supposed to be going up, take seven around to. The Walmart intersection there and then take eighteen back. But instead they're cutting through here. Uh, but when I talked to Ronan Bridge, you were saying that's supposed to be allowed for a cut, a cut through? That it's never been that populated until here recently, it seems like. Or should I say that congested with semis?
I don't know what one can do.
I, my suggestion was.
I didn't think he could drive on certain roads.
If it's not lit or.
It's not listed?
Listed or signed, you're free to go. But there's spots on that road I wouldn't wanna drive.
I wouldn't drive though.
Is that, is that county or is that city?
Is that?
That's been the problem is because.
Sections of it, the city too.
Yeah, well. The city has. Urick, where Urick's come out, north of that, I think that's city. But from Urick to Kid Cart is county. I live on the city side though. So that's why, my first thing was to call the police when I first got here. Now they say that's county.
They say it's county.
They don't have enough people to watch it.
Can the county put signs up?
Uh, your township would be the next step.
Yep.
See, that's.
You go, you know, city. But you said you talked to Don Kiefer, isn't that what you said? He's already talked to the township.
Don, Don Kiefer's the one to get ahold of for Clinton Township?
Well, I talked to him about, he said.
Yeah, he's one of.
It's kinda, you know. I asked him about putting signs up there, saying, speaking, said, they won't look at them. They'll just keep going. I said, what about?
That's on your township.
You put those signs in my front yard, it flashes how fast you're going. I don't care.
Who put, who puts the signs up for weight limits? Who does that?
Weight limit, that's a vision. I stay usually down Zars.
I mean, I just wondered if.
They yell.
Only certain weights, keep semis off the, cause semis shouldn't be going through there anyway.
We need to ask Dennis on what he's gotta do as far as following.
Yeah, I just gotta phone him, yeah.
Uh, forward as far as weight limits on roads. I don't know what our stipulations would be.
I don't know.
Put a weight limit just on a road.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I say, I think probably the best and quick easiest thing to do would be put up signs that says, know through traffic for, you know, they got the big trucks.
Eighteen where it is.
Yeah. But there you go. Again, it's just a sign, they'll, they'll fly by it. But at that point, you have opportunity to call D O T.
Sheriff can get a, our sheriff.
I was gonna say, unless you said sheriff down there, they'll catch one coming through.
Well, I mean, I talked to the sheriff, I came to the sheriff's department after, I talked to the police department. They said unfortunately, they only have one deputy that runs the whole county in the morning time when everybody's flying through there. As far as the semis, it's hitting this when they're gonna come through.
Would that still be a township decision?
Still be a township.
It'd still be, you talk to your township, see if they would put up a sign that says, know through trucks.
If they'd put it up.
Okay.
I have Bob Parks or.
I, yeah, I've talked to Bob. I didn't know. Only because we.
Bob said.
Recently, well, not about the, about a different.
I think, I thought he has speed bumps, cause semis, once they hit the speed bumps, they'll say, we're not going that way no more.
Yeah. You put D O T out there, they'll, they'll stop going that way too. That's who I would call, honestly.
Who?
D O T, Department of Transportation.
That would put a stop to it quicker than anybody.
Well, yeah, and that's what me and Don even agreed with me on that, put the speed bumps out there. Slow the speeders down and once the semis, especially if they have a load or don't have a load, that's bouncing around all back there. They're gonna slow down if not try to find another route. And if that's what I could say, Don even, Don said that they're supposed to be going to. The intersection of seven and eighteen and coming back down. But.
Is there a liability with speed bumps?
I don't know.
I would think.
That'd be what I'd worry about. Put a big speed bump out there.
I mean.
Somebody have a wreck.
Say, it's no different putting one there or having one out there that someone put in the road.
Yeah, they put it on mine.
Yeah, so I mean, we can't have that.
You put a speed bump in front of my house, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, we can't have those out on the, on the road, so.
That's probably.
It's a great idea, just.
Let's just pull one in front of my house. Put a sign, speed bump ahead. All right, well, I just wanted to bring to you guys attention.
Yeah.
Let's see what we can kinda do.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, it's summertime's coming, people are gonna be out there walking.
Yes.
You got the hot lots, you got the, the semis, I just hate for somebody to think they just ran over a speed bump or something.
Yeah.
Sure.
I know the walkers you're talking about.
Yeah.
Good night.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Somebody else called about this, about that not too long. It may have been him.
Okay, okay. Do you need driver's license or something?
Mine's current.
Uh, the one we have just is, I think was expired. Or I didn't, maybe we didn't have yours. Uh, do you want me, is there a photo copy downstairs or do you want me to just take a picture?
You can take.
There's a photo, there's a copy machine right there.
Just that way?
That'll work. Down here.
Expired. And so I called both of them and said, are your driver's license expired? And they both said no.
The photo copy you had and then March was the other.
Mine could have been an old one.
Yeah.
I mean, several years ago.
Thank you. Yep, cause I think yours was from January, right? Yeah, that'd be about right. I'll make a quick copies and then. So if, uh, I'm getting a new license here this year, mine expires, do you need me to come in and? Uh, the next, if we have to update signature cards, I just need it, they'll run on file when we update them. Okay. So if it's expired and we're not changing anything, it's okay. Okay.
Who was that guy's name?
Jim McHadden. H A D D E N.
H?
N C H A D D E N.
Oh, hey.
McHadden.
McHadden, sorry. I didn't understand. H E?
H A D D E N.
Alright, thank you. Do we know whereabouts the city has maintenance on that road that cuts from seven?
Good luck.
See, I, I haven't been able to find.
The city don't wanna claim it, the township don't wanna claim it. They don't wanna do anything with it.
It's just mystery road.
Pretty much.
That's, that's.
Pretty much. I was too under the impression, under the impression, and this is not factual. That the city came to Urick and then the township picked up after that. That's what, that's what I've always believed. Now whether that's right or not, I cannot verify.
Right, we battled back and forth when he was mayor. How, yeah, it's kinda what we agree. We'll take care of this half, we take care of that. But when the new mayor came, she was not as reliable. And guess what? Everything changes. Cause I knew, when I'm, we was, we was going out to supper, there's a wreck up and they called me and said, well, hell, I got the guy here in charge of that, you need to call Kelly.
Thank you.
But anyway, we got it. That's, that's a problem with that road out there.
Got everything you need?
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Just like the whistles and everything, yeah. To me, and just like Corningham, once you leave. Van's hat here, turn right, or, well, the road up here where Alba Scott's house.
Urick.
Oh, Urick.
Yep, see, then half of that road is a township, half of it's county. Cause that road don't run straight. Now, why it doesn't matter as far as I'm concerned, but that's, that's some of the issues that's all been brought up before. But good luck on trying to get.
Once again, it's one of those things that didn't get put down on paper.
That's exactly why it was.
Back and verify.
Just like when we done, when we done up there by, behind Cooks or in front of Cooks, you know, Mallard's, that street. When they, when they came and wanted to annex that in the. The, uh, city, they wanted in their city limits. Said, you're gonna take out a damn road. No, we aren't. I said, well, then we aren't gonna sign off on it. And finally, then they went ahead and tell you, that's on the gravel road they got. But guess what? They've taken it. It's not our responsibility, cause they wanna lay a sewer line up there. I said, we're not touching that. That's yours baby. And that's, that's how we got it. But it's just like out here, Van's hat road, out here, they cut seed by sluggers, out that way, same situation. Then it turns right, part of it goes down, as you're going down one hundred road. That gets in the same situation. Only that's half and half. But it's a problem. If you're gonna deal with city and everything, it's just better off one of y'all. That way you take care of it. We don't need to own city, in city limits, as far as I'm concerned. That's, that's cities. They get money for that.
And their city limit starts there, Booth Road?
Huh?
I think that's where the sign is, is right at Booth, when you're coming in on seven.
Okay. I think you're right.
But out on Vansing, it, you would think it, it goes straight down Vansing and tells, somebody wanted in the city and then it jumps over for just a little bit. And then it goes back straight down Vansing.
Are you in integrity?
Yeah.
Look at there.
Well, I was looking at Booth, but yeah.
You can see the roads. The road's crooked. I remember when they, first black, first time they ever blacked out, used to be gravel all the way down there. And my partner owned that house up there, they had awful fight over it, getting back to who's gonna black top it and everything. And finally, I think city ended up doing it, cause they wanted it done. But since then, now we're repairing it.
Vansing's awful. You lose tire over there.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know.
Well, the one in front of the Benson Center's no bad at all. It's awful right there.
But I wish we had something down that we knew exactly where we're at. Same as for them. That way everybody knows where, where we're at. And to me, the front half we're back at, I don't care, whatever.
I'd write something up, send it to them certified letter and then just stick with it.
See what they say.
You can do that. You could have a meeting with the streets department and, you know, the township and say, look, this, what do you have? What do we have? And put it.
It's all we got.
And we both, both the township signed off on it, the city signed off on it, we all agreed. This is how it is from this day forth.
Yep, but out here, you got Fields, uh, Fields Creek?
Fields Creek should be.
I think it comes.
Does it come part of Fields Creek too? But is it, it's Fields Creek in the city. It would still be the city.
Yeah, but then down here.
It would be Clinton Township. Well, when it switches over to township, I think it just switches to Clinton. And Fields Creek, it's in the city part.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think.
For Booth Road?
Yeah. Cause there's parts of Fields Creek that are in the city limits.
Oh boy. So that, he was, that Jim was saying, from seven to Urick. Road was city? Is what he was told? And from Urick down to?
Kid Cart.
Okay, I see it now. Is us?
Is township.
Township, yeah. Huh? You know, who'd even get ahold of?
Huh? What?
I was just thinking who you'd even get ahold of.
Who's over there? Cities?
Um.
John McClane?
Mm-mm.
Brad? Brad Combs?
Is it?
He's a part.
T J? T J?
That's right.
Oh, for Rhodes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be T J Williams.
There you go.
Okay.
He's, he's the city streets and he.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. Well, that's everything, isn't it?
Yeah.
Make it all set, all set.
Yep, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, saying we adjourn.